Yes, yes.
Josh, you get to act as the clerk.
Yeah.
Be very careful.
Yes.
First.
Yes.
Yes, this is. They're, they're.
Social distancing.
Yeah.
Good evening. At seven o'clock on March nineteenth, twenty twenty, welcome to the Special Court of Education meeting for USD two ninety. We do have seven board members present tonight. Um, please remember, Mr. Robinson and Sarah, we need our board clerk for the seating. Um, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So.
Second, favor raised your hand. That passes seven out. And sir, Dr. Cobb's reporting on COVID nineteen and virus processes.
So I would ask if we can have the total conversation about COVID nineteen, if we can rearrange the agenda a little bit and work through some of the action items um, that we can uh, that we can certainly make some decisions on tonight. The rest of it is kind of open discussion. Uh, but we can certainly begin to to make some decisions about some of these other things. If that's okay with with the board, we'll start with three point oh two and then come back to three point oh one. Um, so the first piece of this is food service for students. We have a plan in place. Waiver has been submitted to KSDE. Um, although the waiver has not been approved because there's two hundred and eighty six school districts out there that are um, applying for the waiver and that's a whole lot of bureaucracy for for them to work through. Um, we've been given the green light to go ahead with a with a food service plan. We met with um, with Jody Harold um, and Eve with uh, with Oba uh, earlier this week to to develop that plan as well as our transportation director, Rita Thompson, to uh, to work with uh, with her and how we might utilize our transportation staff to better implement food service distribution across the district. So the great thing about this is that um, that our waiver will uh, will ultimately implement a summer meal program prior to the end of the school year. And because of our our free introduced uh, counts across the district, what it really means is that every student, not just our free and reduced students, but every student will be afforded the opportunity to have both lunch and breakfast at no cost to the family. So it is a free option. Not every family has to accept it, um, but but if they want the meals, uh, we'll work through how we how we get those meals to and we'll we'll uh, we'll walk through that here in just a little bit. The other piece that exists with this is that um, if there are students that are not in our school, under the age of, they wouldn't be students, but um, kids that live in a home that are that are not USD two ninety students, under the age of five, so three, four, whatever it happens, they can also get meals. They don't have to be students to do it. We just have to know what they uh, who they are um, and how many we're gonna need in the area that they come from, so that we can document that on the USDA ledger. Make sure it will be consistent across the across the board. But this is a a huge benefit for our community. Uh, this has probably been the most asked about piece and the one that has that has probably created the most concern. How are we gonna take care of our families that that need this help? Not only can we take care of of those that we know, we can take care of everybody at this point if they if they so choose to do it. So um, the the next piece of this is how will we deliver, how will we make this happen? So all of the, just like in a normal school day, all of the all of the um, the food preparation will take place at Ottawa High School. We will have six different sites in which students can pick up. We will also deliver to our rural students. So anybody that is outside of the the city that we would typically be picking up on a rural route from buses, or even those students that live outside of the city that would be eligible for a rural route and its parents uh, pick them up, drop them off, whatever it happens to be, we will deliver meals to those students. Uh, they'll will simply have to call in or fill out the form. We will make sure that we can get to those those homes and we will deliver those meals each and every day. The other meals will be provided at at six distinct school drop off points. So you can come to the high school and you can do a grab and go at the high school or Lincoln or Garfield or Sunflower or Eugene Field. Any of those will work. Um, and you don't have to go to, uh, we didn't do OMS because it's so close to high school. So um, go to go to the high school if you're if you're an OMS kid and and pick it up. Um, but we we wanted to make sure that we didn't have to have parents that traveled to multiple sites. So if you have a student that's at Sunflower as well as the middle school, as well as the high school, you can pick any one of those sites and pick up all three meals. Um, so there's really a lot of different options here uh, that families can can work through. We have a Google form ready to go out. Once the board approves the the plan, uh, we'll get it out tomorrow. I have Dana and Melissa ready to start working through some of the phone calls that we know that will come uh, our way. Um, our our food service is ready. Uh, there's no doubt that we're going to be overloaded with things at first. We'll probably have a great deal of waste. Um, we shouldn't have any issues where we don't have enough. They're prepared for if we run out at a particular stop, for families to go back to the high school and make their meals for them. And then we'll continue to to monitor that day to day in terms of of what we need. Um, the the caveat to this that all of our parents should know about is that in order to receive the meal, the kid has to be there to get it. So a parent can't come in and pick up three meals without any kids. That for us, and this is not our, this is a USDA guideline, in order for us to hand those meals to the family, the recipients of those meals have to be visible to us. So even when we go to rural routes to drop them off, we can't drop them off with a parent. We can drop them off with a parent if the kid is there, or we can drop them off to the kid, whatever it happens to be. So just like on a rural route, if we pick up at the end of the driveway, we'll drive down there, kids will be sitting there, we'll hand it out, we'll mark the information that we need to mark, students will have their meals. Their meals daily will consist of lunch that day and breakfast for the following day. Um, and again, as we go through this, we'll learn a lot, but this is the first step and probably a very, very difficult task uh, for Oba and for our transportation staff to manage each and every day. We'll get that at it every day. But if you've ever watched lunch distribution on the first day of school, you know that there are always hiccups. You will will certainly see those. Uh, but we have a great food service staff and our transportation department is is top notch. We'll make sure that we get this right. Um, I I know that we'll ask parents to be patient with us. I'm sure that we'll make mistakes along the way, but we will get to the point where we're very good at this process. We'll make sure that kids uh, have their meals and their breakfast each and every day. Um, so that is the plan for food service. Again, the the Google form will go out uh, tomorrow. It, once the board approves, if the board approves, we'll get that Google form out there. We'll make sure that we start distribution of meals Monday morning. Um, it looks like we're going to make the the pickup times um, ten thirty to eleven thirty at each of those sites. The um, the transportation department is communicating with rural route folks right now about when they'll get to each of those stops and have kids ready for them. Any questions about food service?
Okay, you said children under five are eligible.
Yes.
Do they necessarily have to have siblings that are students, or we could have somebody with just small toddlers?
No. Yes. Yep.
And then you said the children have to be there to get a lunch.
Yes.
Can one student represent siblings and three single recipients?
Each, each student has to be there to take their lunch. And again, I wish that that wasn't a guy. It would make this thing a whole lot easier and certainly make it much easier for families.
Okay.
But that is a guideline from from the USDA, um, and that is one of the guidelines for um, for being reimbursed for this process. So we have to make sure that every time parents and families come to pick up meals, that however many meals they're getting, they have that many kids with them.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So how are we going to navigate this on pickup? To not exceed our ten people?
Yeah.
Because if a family brings three or four kids, man.
So. So we will make sure that we communicate with families that the pickup is gonna be a drive through option. Stay in your cars. All of our parking lots are big enough that they can stay in their cars. They can handle that capacity. Stay in your car. As, we're gonna use our buses like a food truck. So we will have staff in the bus, ready to hand out meals. When the car pulls up, they'll say, I need three from, one from Sunflower, one from Garfield, one from whatever. Okay, here are your three. We'll mark them off. We'll hand them into the car, car will go along your car. Um, we'll make sure that we communicate that to everybody's.
So if I'm understanding this right, I'm gonna back up. We, this is all free and part of the waiver?
Yes.
So none of this is coming out of our food budget?
No.
Okay.
No. Now, the salary, the, the, none of the cost to our kids is coming out of our budget. The salary, the contract that we have with Oba is still going to be enforced, um, so that we we pay them to do all of this. So that much of our contract exists. Uh, but as in terms of us paying for any of the meals, no, that's already reimbursable. We'll, it'll.
So basically, we won't see this normal thing like when we see on our district warrant report, like when we pay Oba so many meals for that month, this is gonna be adjusted because of the waiver?
Yes, it should be, yes.
Okay. Or just make sure.
That's the way that I understand it.
Okay. And I know this is gonna be a lot of paperwork.
And and I would imagine that what we will see is initially there will be some cost to us and there will be a backlog of payback. And so we'll get through it.
So this, this makes me feel a little better. This is one of the reasons why I was talking about us meeting, is I was concerned, one, how do we feed our children that
Yep.
rely on getting fed here. And two, this also helps pay staff by still giving them a job to go out with our transportation department. So. So it makes me, Shannon, do you have any other questions?
I think I wasn't listening. Did you say this will go on throughout the summer?
No. So our food service only works through us through the end of school year.
Right.
So we we do not have a contract with Oba to continue it to the summer. Now, ECAN will continue the summer lunch program. And I would guess that through this, they will have some of the same waivers that we're now seeing to feed all all kids. And we'll have some different conversations about the different areas in which we might be able to provide food services, but ECAN will continue their summer lunch program once school is out for us.
So this ceases on the fourteenth and they take up?
May, May fourteenth. ECAN and I will have some conversations coming up about how quickly they can get their summer lunch programs done.
So I mean, on Friday then, would we piggyback our Friday delivery with, I don't know, I'm gonna get the program wrong, but the back.
Using schools for back snack. So I.
For the kids for the weekends.
I have started conversations with Rachel Smith and communities in schools about the back snack program, and that's what she would like to do, and I think it makes perfect sense. That we would find some way to have CIS partner with our transportation department and as we identify those kids, give them the back snacks as they go home from the day.
Uh, also a question is, have we contacted ECAN and other uh, non-offices to know? I think it's new that the under five is eligible for this. So theoretically, any child of school age to birth to school age would be eligible for this.
Well, they would, except I don't know that six month olds are gonna be eating chicken patties on Wednesday.
No, right now, yeah. Right, no, but I'm.
But yes, e- essentially that is, that is what it means. Um, ECAN, I believe, um, so typically their waiver uh, is is for free and reduced students and and there have been some things that have changed over the past years that have allowed them to do some different things. Uh, they have to worry about where they where they serve based upon uh, areas identified by socioeconomic status and so on and so on. Um, we have been meeting for summer lunch program for about the last three months now, trying to to figure out how we um, how we do this. The school has already been identified in multiple areas to provide um, an established place for them to house their summer lunch program. The COVID nineteen piece is going to change what they do. Um, and and Teresa Templeton and I uh, will get together here very quickly um, as soon as, as soon as everybody returns, um, and have some conversations about what ECAN is going to do with summer lunch program. Make sure that we can start and have a very fluid transition, that there isn't a weak lapse in there in which we're not providing lunches and we're gearing up for them to provide lunches. So some of those same USDA um, waivers that we're getting right now should be accessible to them um, as soon as, as soon as they're ready to fill out those forms and go through it.
Dr. Robinson, answer question.
Dr. Cobb, so we would have sent that information out through Franklin County Children's Coalition on Monday this week too. So they're aware, all of the organizations that are part of that, which should include ECAN, um, are aware that we're gonna be providing starting on Monday.
Okay, that was, thank you for answering your question. Thank you for asking my question.
As far as the rural students that don't currently ride the bus, but that are wanting to get this, will that just be something on the Google form? Or is that an extra step that the families?
It's, it's on the Google form for them to identify if they're rural students, if they wanna deliver or if they wanna pick up. If they wanna deliver, we'll, we'll get that.
I have a couple of questions. Is this five days a week or is that?
Five days a week.
Is it three days?
Um, we're gonna say it's five days a week. Um, but that'll, we'll have to have some of that conversation with Oba to make sure that we're not infringing upon a contract on days that they wouldn't have normally had schools. What it might mean on those days is that we send home multiple days of lunches the day before.
And then um, my other question was, this waiver, are, how confident are we that it's gonna be approved and what are we looking at?
One hundred percent.
Okay, so is it?
Yeah, we made some adjustments to it today, and I think they came back and said it's much better. Um, but then it really, it's just a lot of making sure that everything we said aligned to them. So when I, when I built, when I, when I submitted the initial waiver, um, we hadn't had the same conversations with transportation that we had the following, following day. So we initially had talked about one area for pickup to make it easiest for food service to provide, which would have been the high school. Everybody comes to the high school, we pick it up and and grab and go. But as we started having that conversation, um, transportation was really gung ho about, let us do some of these things. We can do food trucks with our buses. We can do all of these things. So that morphed and we had to go back and and make some changes to that waiver. Um, and then there were a couple of things that just didn't line up right. So we've made those adjustments. Waiver's gonna be approved. No, no issues.
I just have one last question. So what, since we know we have some in our community, that is a confirmed case, what if we have somebody that is on quarantine or whatever, that's a family in two ninety, we still do delivery?
Yeah, our transportation department is awesome. And we've got lots of people that, you know, when we get to payment for classified staff, we've got lots of people that are gonna get paid. They're, we're mandated by the state to pay them. So some of that, we're just simply going to say, get in your van, drop it off. We'll drop it off on the step. We'll make sure that we see the kid through the window waving at us, and we'll get, believe it then. You know, just, we'll do it. We'll do it.
Any further questions on this one before we um, ask someone else?
I, I just have one question. And I assume that Oba will, the people who are gonna be preparing the food as far as like any sickness or concerns with that?
They, they're gonna follow all the guidelines that they would have to follow for food preparation anyways. So um, we have to go through, they have a very stringent process to be able to prepare food in schools. Um, that is really rigorous, very rigorous. Um, so we've already had some conversations about making sure that um, our staff follows the, our food service staff follows the same quarantine guidelines. That if they can't, if they, if they've been out of state, that they're not coming in. If they've been around somebody who's been sick, they're not coming in. If they're sick themselves, that they're not coming in. We'll make sure that we have all of those guidelines in place for them, the same that we would for all of our other staff, and have very clear expectations about what it is that we're providing in our food service and that Oba manages those things effectively for us.
This is all very impressive. It really is. I'm glad that we're taking care of our kids.
Yeah, it's gonna be a good thing. It's gonna be a good thing.
So with that, I agree that we approve the plan for food service and provide Dr. Cobb's authority to continue if needed.
Yeah, and the reason I ask that is the waiver, um, the waiver has to go through particular times. So as that waiver runs out and we have to reapply for it, then we don't have to come back every time and do this. We'll, we'll continue to.
Sure.
Um, favor raised your hand at this seven out?
Casey. Next one is three point oh three, which is payment of classified staff. When we initially put this on the agenda, it was still a district option to determine whether or not they wanted to pay their staff or not. It is, it is no longer uh, an option. There was a legislative um, motion and and approval to mandate uh, that all hourly staff is paid in schools uh, through uh, this closure through May twenty ninth. Now, we do not have to abide by it through May twenty ninth because our schools close on on May fifteenth uh, with our staff, but in essence, what it says is that we're going to continue to pay our staff throughout the remainder of the school year as we normally will. This includes transportation. This includes par- and classified staff. It includes custodial staff and and all hourly staff. We pay in this manner. The only people that that were not identified um, were substitutes because it would be a nightmare to try to do this with subs. Um, subs are just kind of all over the place in this. So subs are not identified um, in this legislation. But everybody else is. What that really means for us is that um, as we start going through the plan for student learning, um, that we are going to utilize our staff in a number of different capacities. That para staff may not just be para staff anymore. That um, that our, our secretarial staff may not just be secretaries anymore. We're going to ask them to do a lot of things because the work day is going to look very different. So even if the expectation of the work day might be two hours a day, please know that our classified staff is getting paid for their seven and a half hours or whatever their normal work day is going to be. They will continue to get their normal paycheck. We have expectations that they work with us in a particular. We have expectations that they work with us in a particular manner. Now, if they have to self-quarantine, if they, um, have been around somebody and they can't commit, if they have underlying health issues, they are still going to get paid. If they are not to the point where they cannot perform duties, we're going to ask them to do some things from home. For instance, Dean will come down here and show, there he is over there. He's gonna show you some of the awesome things. If you guys haven't, you haven't met our incredible tech director, I would invite you to really get to know Dean Gill. Um, he has done some awesome things with a dashboard for, um, for our staff, for our community, to really understand what is happening with this. One of the things that he's, that he's talking about in there is that students and teachers can punch, and, and parents, you tell me if I'm-
You got this.
Can punch a help button. Somebody has to be able to man those help buttons. And maybe part of that is that our classified staff is, is expected to man some of those help buttons at certain times. It doesn't mean they have all the answers. What it does mean is that their job is to find the answer. Who do I need to contact to get this answer and communicate it back to the person that's asking the question? So their jobs are going to look vastly different. It is not going to be, I am a building aide and my job was to be the library aide, so I'm going in to be a library aide while schools are shut down. No. You were a library aide before. Now you're a USD two ninety employee and we're going to have you do lots of different things to meet our students and our teachers' needs during this time. So, um, we will work through all of those things as we continue to plan what it is. But I think what, what we need to know and what we wanna make sure that our board approves tonight, so that our staff can hear it from you guys, even though it's a mandate now, is that we wanna take care of our staff during this time. We are going to take care of our staff during this time. The only time that they would have to use sick leave in this capacity is if they're actually sick and they can't perform their duties. If they can't turn in your sick leave, you'll still get paid if you get sick leave, right? If you're not sick, but you're quarantined or you have underlying health issues or whatever it happens to be, we're going to find a different capacity for you to work. We'll do some of those things. If you can come in and do the things that we need you to do when we have small sessions, that's gonna be the expectation for them. It will be a vastly changing dynamic each and every day. But we will have a number of people communicating what those expectations are to each of our staff members every day, every day. But you can, you can be assured that the days of teachers working for eight hours a day in their classroom are not going to happen in the state of Kansas for the remainder of the year. That much is clear. That is clear.
This little thought kept buzzing through my brain as you're saying all this. They're, you know, you know, they're playing games up in Topeka about the governor's power to do this.
Yes.
Will, could, is there danger that any of this planning, any of this money, any of this, these mandates could be taken from us?
Uh, well, at the point that she did it, she had the authority to do so. Um, and, and I'll be honest with you, there are other states getting ready to follow suit. Um, the, the, I think we can honestly say that Kansas may have led the way in terms of a government shutdown, but we certainly weren't the first state to say that your schools aren't gonna go to, to school. And you've got the president that's sitting out there that's saying that he's gonna send checks to everybody from, anywhere from one thousand dollars to four thousand dollars. This, this is not unprecedented. Uh, although it is unprecedented, but, but we are not, we, the state of Kansas is not dangling out there on a limb. The, I mean, these things are happening across the nation. I feel very confident that, that the things that we put in place are going to be supported by the people that need to support them. What I don't feel confident about is that whatever plan we put in place today will be the same plan that exists on Monday. And that whatever we do on Monday will be the same plan that exists on Friday. We are living in a very, a very rapid, rapid change. Um, and, and, um, when we start talking about what has happened even in Johnson County, where we went from one case to sixteen cases or whatever it is now, fourteen cases, twelve cases in a period of about three days, like, those things are going to begin to happen across our state. And every time they do, when we see more governments step in and say, hey, look, bars and restaurants, you're not allowed to have people inside of them anymore, it's gonna change the dynamic for whatever it is that we've done. And we are going to have to evolve with whatever those changes are. That's the beauty of teachers. They evolve every day. This is, this is why we talk about differentiation of instruction or what they recognize day to day, I need to do something different. Teachers are, are incredibly flexible. And that's just a piece of what we're going to have to do. But in terms of the money and the things, the money is the same for us. We've budgeted all this money anyways. And, and we've already been told that we're not gonna have to go beyond. The waiver is gonna be there so that we don't have to, to go beyond days. We, we will, we will meet the one thousand one hundred and sixteen hour requirement by the waiver. On May fourteenth will be our last day of school for students regardless of what happens. The money that we had to pay all of our staff was budgeted there. It's not gonna cost us more money. The, these things are, are ready for us with, with no issues.
Do you have any long-term subs that are gonna be effective?
Yes. So the long-term subs will stay with us, um, because of the expectation that we continue education for those kids, right? And that, that was very clear from KSDE that we better have a plan in place for how we're gonna continue education. So those teachers that were out on leave, we still need somebody to address those classrooms. Um, so if we had a long-term sub in place prior to the shutdown, they will remain in place through the end of what their sub duty, they're called for.
And then after the end of their sub duty, then we will not be paying them?
Right, correct.
So when you were answering Linda's question, we talked about how this is, you were talking about how this is evolving. Everything changing so rapidly all the time, one plan to the next. Uh, you and I have talked about this throughout the last several days. I think that's gonna be a reason why us as a board may have to meet in between meetings at different times is till we get past all this. But we'll see what happens.
I think that there will be multiple mandates that continue to come to us. Um, and, and, and I will do the best that I can to keep you all informed as those mandates come. And again, what we heard on Monday with Dr. Watson was a lot different than what we heard. Even on Saturday, um, as Franklin County Health Department made their decisions about, uh, about our, our county, um, the message from the state was very different. It wasn't really until we saw what was happening in Johnson County and Senator Reitman, uh, not Senator, um, House of Representatives, um, John Reitman got involved, um, that we saw some shifting in, in posture there. And then, and as we, as we saw those cases, uh, continue to, um, to explode in terms of, of the state, it's, we're in a very different situation now, in a very different situation. We'll continue, we will continue to work with the Franklin County Health Department. Um, and currently, they've given us some latitude to do some things and, and their statement came out and gave us the authority to do that. Um, and, and I think my relationship with, uh, with both Bud Ransom and Mid Ransom, um, gives me the ability to communicate with them maybe more efficiently than, than other people would. Um, but we talk, Bud and I talk nearly every night about what our plan is, what we're going to do. There hasn't been any decision that we have made that hasn't had the blessing of county health officer or the county health department. Um, and, and at this point, we have the green light to do these things. The state is telling us. Now, with that being said, and we heard it from other superintendents today, other counties have stopped it. They said, no, nobody's coming into the building, period. And, and when that happens, we have to back up and we have to, we have to find something else to do. But at this point, that's not happening in Franklin County. We still have some abilities to do some things differently than maybe other districts do.
But just to clarify, so if, if, um, the county health department says in two weeks, no, we don't want people in the building, we're still gonna continue to face staff? I think this is what we're gonna do.
We're, we're gonna continue to face staff and we're gonna have to continue to provide educational services to students.
Right.
And, and again, that's where we started having different conversations with teachers about, now it's gonna look different.
Uh, anybody ready to make a motion about this action?
So this is, this action is purely about pay? It's not about what we're doing?
No, no, just that.
And this pay is coming out budgeted and not through waiver?
Right, yes.
Madam President, I make a motion that we pay our classified staff as we agreed and as in motion.
Second.
And it's been moved as second that we approve the payment for human classified staff through March thirtieth and provide Dr. Cobb's authority to continue if needed on the immigration right hand? And that passes then?
All right. Next one is student access. Um, and so again, the, the county has given us latitude to have small groups in our building of no greater than ten. I think what, what we're asking for here is some latitude to do some things because, and I might ask Josh to come up here with it. There's gonna be a lot of things that happen as we start developing this plan that we're not going to be able to do. There, there are some sped things that have not been relaxed from the fence. Um, and which means that, um, that there might be a time when we have to have one-on-one student interaction with teachers or one-to-two or whatever happens to be. The other part of this is that there is, there is an opportunity for us to recognize when our students aren't able to learn the capacity that we're gonna try to do within this process, that maybe a small group session for thirty minutes with a teacher is the best opportunity for us. As long as the county health department continues to allow that to happen for us, what we're asking for is not to say that we're going to do it, but to give us the latitude to do it if that's the best situation for our students and for our staff. So Josh, I-
We did just get some latitude. So information's changing hourly. Um, and the one thing we haven't seen yet is we haven't seen the federal government step in and relax any of the guidelines. So currently, we're still working under the same annual INP timeline, so we have, if we have evaluations open. Soon as we start providing services again to our larger population, even though we're not in school, those count as school days in the evaluation process. So we still have to complete evaluations. Um, uh, we just got some additional guidance right before I came in from the Office of Civil Rights, that they are relaxing some of the evaluation guidelines. Um, if teams are not comfortable, um, providing face-to-face assessments, there's now an option for us to be able to do, to postpone some of that until school will reopen. But there's still going to be, from a special ed service standpoint, there are gonna be some things that are very difficult to duplicate without us, um, being able to access kids in, um, most of the one-on-one settings is what we're looking at. Um, all of the guidance, Amy and I have been working throughout the day after meeting with principals this morning on guidance documents for staff when they return on Monday. And in all cases, we are discouraging staff from, um, from working with large groups of students. We're trying to use it more as a last resort. But we do know, uh, just based on what we're expected to do currently, that there's going to be times where we may have to do that to still meet, um, the special ed legal requirements.
When you say groups of ten, are you talking about ten kids like in one building or ten?
So currently, what we're being told is that you, and correct me if I'm incorrect here, um, that it's ten per, per classroom, per space. Um, and I don't know, there may be some, s- sometimes where we would, uh, where we would need to access that. But I think that's a, a really, um, extreme model to think that we're gonna do that in every classroom throughout the year.
Could engage self-function under these guidelines?
Um, it could. I don't know that it's a good idea though, um, just because of, uh, the manner in which students and families interact. But there may be students there that it's important for us to be able to provide some face-to-face social, um, emotional, um, you know, instruction that would be more difficult to get them to engage in electronically, you know, and that may be an example there. Um, we're still trying to get some more guidance on what services look like. And we were expecting a little bit more, I think, today in, in that way. So the best example we'll be able to give to staff is, um, we deal quite frequently with students that will move from either Ottawa High School or Engage to our juvenile detention center. Typically, those are placed there by the court. Um, we don't make the determination that they go there, the court does, but then we have to adjust services because there are setting changes. Um, that's the same manner in which we'll be approaching special ed services over the next week. Is, this is not a, a setting change that we made. We didn't determine that school was closing right now. But because of that, our kids that have been getting school in a full classroom with eighteen kids will not be able to do that. They've been doing a seven-hour day. They'll be looking at a much shorter, um, day just based on the guidelines we got from the state. And so we will be looking at our INP goals and what can we provide in the setting they're in now, um, to meet that, that goal. We won't be amending their INPs. We'll basically be noticing families and working with families collaboratively to say, here's the best way to support this family and this child based on their needs. Um, and we'll be adjusting services down based on the amount of instruction they're getting in at their grade level. Um, the state did do a nice job today of providing kind of their expectation of total time allotment and, and all, which will help us with special ed department and being able to adjust services. Um, there's not a special ed department in the state right now that seems to have a clear direction of where they want this to go. Um, everybody we've been interacting with today, they're all trying to take bits and pieces of information and make the best guess. And I think that's where, um, part of the request for being able to potentially bring the students in comes from is there are students, student populations that we're still working through. How do we provide them good services that will help them continue to make progress? Um, and until we can answer all that, it gives us some flexibility to be able to, um, to work with families and staff. Um, and there may come a point where, you know, the health department gives us different direction. But I think, um, having that approval, um, just helps us in providing better services to our students and families.
I think it's important to, to note that our intention is not to say every teacher needs to find a time to have the groups of nine kids in their classroom to instruct in this manner. That we recognize that that's not gonna work. We also recognize it's a very short-lived solution to a problem that's gonna continue to grow. Well, I think what we're asking for is the ability that when we see that student that is going to fall through the cracks, that was a much bigger crack than a normal crack is at this point, that if we can have the opportunity to get them and have some face time with them and make sure that we try to build that up, that we have the latitude to do so. Not that we're going to say, okay, teachers, find a way to have small group instruction three times a week. That, that is really not, that is not the, the path that we wanna go, nor is it the expectation that we wanna have for staff. But the latitude to be able to work independently with students if we need to, if we need to do that for the betterment of our students and the betterment of our staff would be something that we'd ask for to make those decisions as they come up to open.
Um, I have a question. I, I mean, I, I'm very comfortable in trusting our, our local, um, um, health department and their judgment if they feel like up to ten is appropriate and those are meeting CDC guidelines. I, I don't have a problem with that. I do get the term when we talk about applying to students with special needs who we know, um, we may not be able to adequately protect our staff. Um, we know that there's a sort of shortage of PPE and then using that in the school setting is really not a great resource at all. That's not where, that's not where that needs to be. So how do we, how do we justify that? How do we provide that? How could you do that?
So a lot of what we've been doing all week has been trying to collect information from other places. So we know one day, many of the questions we're going to be asked are about people who are used to providing services face-to-face. And now, you know, we're reducing that option. Occupational therapists are a good example. Um, so initially, when we started this conversation, part of our conversation was that there may be times that our OTs need to be able to work face-to-face. We've gotten good information from other states who are working off of e-learning, have been for years, as to how they've been delivering those services. Now, would they be what we would typically recommend? No, probably not. Uh, but in this setting, can they still provide students, um, and families activities to continue to support their growth for the next seven or eight weeks while we kind of work through, uh, the situation that we're in? Yes, absolutely. We wanna make sure that we're doing everything that we can to protect our staff. And all of our discussions today have been that part of this, um, using an option that's face-to-face has to be done in a manner where both the staff member and the family are comfortable as well. Um, I don't think any of us are looking to force somebody to work with a student face-to-face if they're not comfortable. Uh, we also know that there are some staff in our district that we're gonna have to tell them no. Um, that they would, they would do anything they could to help their kids be successful. But there are risk factors that are, um, that put them at risk. And, and while they think they're going to navigate through this without any issues, I mean, we wanna do everything we can to protect our staff. So I don't know that I've got a clear answer for you, Julie. I just, this isn't something we're gonna take lightly. It's not something we're encouraging, um, at least from the special ed side, to be done. I really thought we were gonna need it more from evaluations. Um, and there will still be some of those that we will have families that are adamant that evaluations are completed and as they're right, um, to do so, that they're gonna be done this school year and they're gonna be done, um, and, you know, just as we always would. And we'll work through those situations, but, um...
Has CMS approved funding for e-learning at this point?
Has CMS approved funding for e-learning at this point?
The only thing we've seen, the only thing we can provide as far as e-learning goes that we'll get Medicaid kind of reimbursement for is teletherapy through speech. They've been discussing it in other areas, but last I saw, they haven't opened any of that up yet. So we know that's an area that we're gonna, we're gonna see kind of a hit. At the same time, we're also going to see some funds coming back into our district. We've got students that are at outside locations, like Mary, for example. They informed us this afternoon that they're, because of the closure, those students that we've had enrolled there are, 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 they've been our responsibility. But as far as in this time, they'll be our responsibility for providing and designing services for. That's a pretty hefty cost. So I mean, I think we're gonna see it balance out, so I'm not as worried about the cost piece, but we haven't seen them expand yet.
I think you do need the authority and the flexibility, and I don't have a problem with that. My only comment would be is I would hope that face-to-face would be the last resort. And I'm the last guy that would've set that up about a week ago.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm a firm believer in technology, I'm a firm believer in economy, you know, everything else can be done. And I think we really ought to protect the students and the staff and have face-to-face contact at the last resort when all else has failed, so.
I think, I think we all have our own concerns. So even, even on the, the communication with staffs at this point, Dean and I have been talking since we started moving this direction. We'll start Monday modeling for our staff, our meeting to be handled through Zoom, even though we'll be in district. And part of that is, I don't have a lot of speech paths, I don't have a lot of meetings. I mean, one of the issues that special ed departments are concerned about is, is just having a shortage of providers to provide services. So we wanna make sure we're doing everything we can to keep our, our staff in a safe environment. And part of that is giving them some ways to collaborate without bringing them all together, so.
Absolutely. The other part of this, Josh should speak more about it, it doesn't mean is that, that I think what KSDE is asking us to do is kind of put a tuck-in on learning. Make sure that we don't have this, this huge gap in learning that's already existed over the course of the last quarter. From a special ed point, part of that is that we provide enough services that we do not overload our staff the following year doing compensatory services. Because that, that is another piece of this, of this puzzle, that if we don't have the ability to provide some of those services the way that we should be providing during this time, law would provide for students, for parents to ask for compensatory services the following year, which means now we're doubling or tripling up on those services, which would be a huge load on our staff, as well as on our students. It would be very difficult for students to not only get their instruction that should be taking place within the school level and also the services that should be provided. So we wanna try to make sure that we navigate those waters and do the best that we can and still make sure that we set ourselves up for a great start to the year.
And we won't, we'll mention that to our staff right now, but we're not asking them to make determinations this week about compensatory services. I knew in this paper we're gonna have to. But what we really wanna see is, one, how, how, how much does this model limit our students from accessing what they should have been able to access, or what relays the gap in services? And also, what happens to them as far as their IEP goals? Do we see a decline? Do we see students, see students that maintain? It's a whole lot easier to have a conversation with families when we know all the facts. And so we will start early in the fall, talking with families about, here's, here's what our, our assessment data shows, here's where we expected them to be and kind of what the gap looks like. I know just from situations where we've had to work through compensatory services previously, some families, some families will really push for them, others will not want their child to be pulled more frequently. I mean, if you're already looking at three times a week for speech and now we're talking about five, some just aren't gonna want their kids out of the classroom that much. So the more we can do right now, the better job we can do right now to provide services, that hopefully it puts us in a better spot for them in August.
If you are concerned about the students who are gonna fall through the cracks, as you mentioned, why would you need to have more than one, like, face-to-face? Why would you need any more than one in a group?
I don't know if I understand your question, could you repeat it?
If you, you mentioned that you're wanting the ability to make sure that if you see someone that is going to fall through the cracks, that you have the ability and our approval to meet with them. If that's what you're concerned about, then why would you need to meet with more than one student at a time?
Nothing that I've written for sped staff right now is recommending more than one-on-one. So we know we have students that even when they're in a, in school setting, a normal school setting, are difficult to provide services to. It's hard to keep them engaged, it's hard to just navigate attention, whatever the case may be. It's one of the known challenges for providing any kind of virtual learning. If we go paper pencil, it's gonna be just as hard for mom and dad to do those kind of things. So there may be some students like that, that it's beneficial for us once a week or periodically to still bring them in and make sure that we can go over some things, or that we can model for a parent. This is how we would do some of those things. But nothing that I've written in a guidance document for special ed staff right now has called for anything more than one-on-one. That doesn't mean it would be necessary.
The, the thing that you think about in terms of instruction is if you've got two or three kids, and again, the, the question that we're asking for is latitude, not that we're actually going to make those decisions at the time this comes, but if you've got two or three kids that are struggling with the same issue, and we can do so in a safe manner, get them into an environment in that, that manner is deemed safe by our, again, health department, then it certainly makes it easier for our staff to provide them with some of those. So that's, that's why you asked for the latitude, and that's why you might be a little more personally involved.
I think the ten came from the health department's kind of needs to start with. Let me correct.
But I mean, when like, if you look at us in here, how far you, you had us set up, this wouldn't be how you'll be interacting with a group of students.
Not on a normal day. But in a new world of education, there's gonna be a lot of things that aren't the way that we would normally work with students. We would normally ask all of our students to do everything via a, a digital platform. That, that hasn't, that hasn't been the case in any educational platform we've provided, even our virtual program. A virtual program still asks kids to come in and do things face-to-face sometimes. So we are, again, in uncharted large, and I think everything that we identify, that's not how we would usually do it. There's, it could be anything that happens over the course of the next seven weeks that is how we would typically do it in a classroom. We're going to, we're gonna maneuver in and out of typical, and oftentimes really very untouchable.
And what kind of feedback have you received from your staff about meeting with students?
We haven't shared any expectations until, really until we get updated here. I know they've seen it, they've seen it just from the governor's speech yesterday, 'cause I know I received an email or two today from staff asking questions. We've been pretty, or at least I've been pretty vague with staff at this point until I knew what, both what our model looked like, which we just started working with principals this morning, and also what the board would support. You know, 'cause we are seeing, the other piece of it is, I'm hesitant to go too far with this and then see our health department make a change, 'cause you're seeing health departments in other places that aren't, aren't supporting running students in.
I think Josh, if there's a work and ask for stuff, be anything that they feel is going to put them at risk. So, our expectation is that our staff finds a way to educate the kids. Some of them may feel that a face-to-face situation might be beneficial at, at some point in time. Others may say, no, I'm uncomfortable doing that, and it can all be different. We are not going to be the ones that say, you have to meet in school.
We're gonna have just as many that are gonna be uncomfortable, only ask to provide services through Zoom for a whole different reason. I mean, it's just not what they're, they're used to doing. And how I intend to approach it with our staff on Monday, I still think we've got an opportunity to do something really exciting here, both for our community, but also I think we're gonna learn a lot about how services can be provided. I mean, you get some flexibility that we don't normally have, we kind of push a little bit of what special ed services look like, and maybe that we find that there's, there's a benefit to providing services this way. I don't really recommend the whole piece of it, but even within our system, there may be things we learn over the next seven or eight weeks that we can modify and adjust and, and use when we quote.
Dr. Cobb, can I add a comment?
Sure.
Another piece, just to speak towards your question too, would be, we, we wanna be able to have the option that with our high school kids, we're still expected to make sure that those kids are getting credits in some way. So if there was, if there were, say, three students that were really struggling to get their math credit, a teacher might need to meet, again, kids all spread out, but they, she might, he or she might need to meet with those kids to be able to help them to get to the point where they have received those credits. So that just gives us that, not that we're expecting them to do that, but if it arises and the student's need is showing that, and if they can't talk with them on the phone or do something through, that's, that's digital, it just gives us that option, that if need be, we can make sure that our kids are getting their credits and thingy.
We'll get to this when we get back to the third point a little while, but we'll talk about seniors specifically. They are still required to meet their competencies in order to, to graduate from high school. This isn't just that, okay, do some stuff and we're done. They have to show that they've met the competencies to finish those courses required for graduation. So there is a lot at stake here for those kids. And, and some of them do not do well in electronic environments. We know that because we've been a one-on-one school now for six years, or whatever it's been. We recognize the difficulties that exist there. So having the ability when we need it to make sure that those kids still meet their expectations and we can have them graduate in here is a, is a big piece of this.
Dr. Cobb, I think something might help here on clarity for everybody, even people watching. Let's, let's kind of play it back, like, when we plan to let the kids start the schoolwork that we're discussing, that we're not necessarily saying that we're bringing all the students back into the Philippines.
No.
That we're-
All students.
I know, but I'm just saying, I think we need to kind of clarify and lay out the plans like point-blank, that what we're saying here is that if we see some kids struggling with the class through Zoom, correct, that we may pull a group of those students, maybe it's in fifth grade or whatever grade, and they're struggling in reading or whatever, and we may pull some of those into the building, but to not exceed our number of what the health department and everything is saying. I just think we need to kind of explain all of this so everybody understands when we're planning on starting this, when the teachers are coming back, and that, yes, we're still gonna get it on May fourteenth.
And if no one, when we ever exceed Franklin County Health Department's expectation, or they can't stay above the health's expectations, we'll have those groups lined up. If it's ten, it's ten. I don't think we're gonna see a time when we ever get to ten, but if we're talking small groups, we're talking small groups. But when those things change, and they will change, then our ability to navigate those waters changes. We'll not, we'll not push the boundaries.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think we need to clarify so everybody that's watching understands what we're saying here.
And I'm pretty comfortable that if you're using Zoom, Zoom gives you a lot of options for audio, video, things like this. If you're done a guy who couldn't Zoom a few weeks ago, I'm now on daily Zoom calls set up on regiment, and Monday was awkward, today was great, okay? So give your staff a few days to figure it out, it'll be awkward. Now, just, I mean, to be honest, it's almost second nature today, and we're gonna continue that on indefinitely. So people are figuring it out.
Well, and we've mentioned Zoom one night. I know Dean's been looking at, at a wider range of options too, that there's some that we may employ or that we can reserve, or just need to set up.
So I think, I think, and there is plenty of technology out there, but just not them, so.
But by approving this, we're just giving you the latitude if needed.
Yes.
You're not gonna be bringing ten kids per grade level in the building every day. If we approve this, you could, right?
Just so you know, they say ten per classroom.
And so, like, if you, if you just think about kids, how I know my kids were upset about not being at school, I feel like there's also the concern of kids wanting to come to the meetings and possibly they have been exposed or they might not be feeling well. How do we know that they're, they're going to be responsible with this and not put our staff at risk? I just, I was frankly shocked that school was canceled for the rest of the year. And I feel that I have trouble, if I'm supposed to take that seriously, I have trouble taking, I have, I have trouble with taking small groups seriously. I don't think that they equal. If we're supposed to buy into that, then I don't know if I can buy into the small groups.
I think the governor, if you look at what the, what the governor actually stated in her, in her school closure, was that schools were mandated to be closed for a two-week period while disinfectant took place. And after that disinfected, then schools could resume in a manner that was small groups and continual learning. So the plan between KSDE and the governor, the governor was well in place prior to the shutdown, and this, this notion of continual learning and utilizing small groups was a proportion of why the governor allowed the shutdown to begin with. So I, I think there are actually facets number two and three in the, in the governor's plan that identifies that there is an allowance for small groups to be continued within school systems. One of the schools in western Kansas has class sizes small enough to meet those guidelines and are basically, it looks like, wanting to be allowed to continue school as normal. With the exception of how they do lunch and pick up and drop off and those types of things. But their class sizes are less than ten. Subsequently, they, they've asked to be able to continue to meet every day, and, and at least from what we've understood at this point, they may be granted the opportunity to do so. So I recognize and I understand what you're saying, that the, the, what was put out there initially when you watched the governor was that I'm closing schools, and I'm closing schools for the safety of our students. And the safety of our communities that house those students and how that our students carry viruses and whatnot to other people. If you, if you watch the other facets of it as she lays out what her plan for school closures are, then you hear her talk about allowing the buildings to reopen in small groups, allowing the buildings to have teachers in them to continue to provide educational opportunities for kids, and the expectation that we do provide educational opportunities for our kids. And we have the ability to determine what that looks like. If the board says that we don't feel comfortable having kids in the building, that's a board decision, and it's certainly one that you can make. What we need to know is how the board feels about it, so that we can direct the plan with our teachers to say, you either do or you don't have the ability to do this. Because you know that there are going to be teachers that ask to do it. If the board doesn't feel comfortable with that, then we need to be able to say no. And so that that's not even a, a, a conversation within the planning process. If we do feel comfortable with it, then we need to recognize that our principals are going to stand up and make sure that we don't overuse it and we don't have this group of nine kids, and this group of nine kids, and this group of nine kids. And we do very small groups, that we do the things that we need to do specifically for our kids that, that have a, a need to be in small groups, and we don't ask our teachers to do something that they feel uncomfortable doing if they don't want to meet with kids, they don't, that we work with parents to screen those kids. Has your kid been sick? Are they sniffling and sneezing? Are they doing these things? Those are going to be the things we're doing with one another every day anyways. Again, we're in unprecedented times. How schools choose to respond to this is, is, is new for all of us. If we say no to this, then we limit our opportunities to address the learning needs of our kids. And if, if that's the, if that's the decision, we're okay with it, right? We recognize that, that there is a lot going on here. But it wasn't our decision to say we are, we aren't. That is your decision, and that's a decision that you guys need to make, and whatever you feel comfortable with. And then when that decision is made, we continue to revisit it with the Franklin County Health Department to ensure that we're doing the right things for our kids and for our community.
Well, when I look at this, I'm looking like into the high school, kids that have projects to complete. They've got a pot that they need to finish up in art, or they, maybe in career tech ed, they've got something that they need to finish welding on, something like that. I mean, if we say no, kids can't go back in the building, then those kids lose the ability to finish projects. And, and those projects can be finished in a small group or a one-on-one setting with just an instructor there to, to book.
I think it, I think it, again, and, and maybe this kind of calm, our intention for our students is not to start new projects.
Right, but to finish while, I mean-
But if we had something that we needed to finish, that was something there, then we need to have some ability to, to get things in and out, to, to finish those projects in, in small groups, not to continue them for the next five weeks, but to make some real decisions about what that looks- but to make some real decisions about what that looks like, and be able, be able to maneuver our kids through that. The, the, the high school is going to have a lot of different, it'll be interesting to see what Neosho County Community College chooses to do with their classes. At this point, they've chosen to not address it for the most part. Um, we've been looking for some conversation with them, um, but there, there's a real possibility that Neosho County works under completely different guidelines than us. Our staff also is under contract with them, um, and so they, we would have to see what happens with Neosho County, uh, for those things. But those things are out of our control. Um, we may tell them that they have to use their own facilities, in that case, and not use ours, because ours are not available for those types of things, but.
Well, I was thinking the kids that were completing certification, like for auto mechanics and that type of thing.
Yeah, so welding is the, is a big one, um, HVAC is a big one. Um, if we had any students that were still in CNA courses at this point, there's gonna be a lot of those things that, that are gonna, that they're gonna have to try to figure out. Um, but that curriculum is a Neosho County issue, um, and, and one that, that we will try to work through with them. It's a part of what all of our students opt out of when, uh, when they take a Neosho County course, is that they're giving up the high school portion of that and accepting the college portion of that as their high school grade. Um, but we will continue to work with Neosho County, and they're on spring break this week as well, um, and it's been very difficult, I know that, that Kelly got a, got ahold of Wendy Rosson yesterday, uh, maybe today, to begin some of those conversations, but I don't know that, that Wendy is capable of making all the decisions for Doctor Embiid and, and the rest of Neosho County.
Sharing your thoughts on the, you were of all of us here, the most, uh, expert as far as what's going on with the COVID and, yeah, on this front lines there. Can you share your thoughts about allowing this boost to ten in the school?
So for me, I think there are a couple things that apply, both safety of staff, safety of the kids. I think we've gotta let our expert educators go with the guidelines of what's been set out by the, the Health Department. Um, I would like for us to reevaluate this probably at our next board meeting, which would be, well, I think it's supposed to be like Monday, but maybe it's the next one when we look at it, because we're more ahead of time, and, and I can tell you that the rapid fire information and changes that are occurring, it's gonna look really different, and we may, I was just looking at my calendar, I was thinking, because the twenty-third kind of falls at the wrong spot, um, for us to evaluate it, would be better if it was the thirtieth, you know, because then we would have had, we would know.
And we can always meet this one then, too.
Right now, we're in process of.
I would just say that even in the thirtieth, the thirtieth would be the first day that we began to handle that any instruction for kids.
Yeah, but I'm just saying the rules by then may have already changed, uh, because the rules will change according to their instruction will be able to change. That's, that's fine, you definitely, because it's gonna just, there's gonna be a tsunami of differences.
And once people get tested, the numbers are going to be going up.
There'll be, there will be less people tested, actually.
There are not enough testing over here.
No, there's not a viable media, yeah, so that, that will be, and there's no point in testing anyway, we know it's in the community now. So there's no point in testing.
But as more people, as that, I know more tests are becoming available, and.
But they're not used now.
It doesn't change, it doesn't change your course of treatment. It's like, it's like if you got a cold, we can give you a million dollars worth of antibiotics, you're never gonna matter. So it's the same thing, if you test, you know, you know you have COVID, it doesn't matter.
Exactly, I'm just saying that the numbers, as more people are tested, because we know people carry it. Um, what about, like, cleaning the, the spaces after groups met?
Uh, so custodians continue to work every day. Um, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have some things that, um, that we have to address, uh, in terms of childcare and those types of things. There, there are most likely going to be kids in the building, um, but at, at that point in time, if we have small groups meet, then will be the expectation for custodial staff to come in and disinfect the area so much they, um, just like they would every night. Anyways, this week, this week might not so.
And so with that, the best guideline I can give you is shut the room down for two hours and then have them clean it and use the portable wipes, um, the ones that are by recital that are approved with the COVID nineteen, but those are in short supply now too. But it's a two hour, I mean, and there was, there is a study that came out, the seasonal viral agent lives for three hours in a year. But I think I'd prefer people, I had to stand on that one right here.
But I, I think you can, you can practice some smart stuff here. For example, you can rotate classrooms, right? Just if we, if we've held a class of three or four in Class A, I agree with you, I, I personally go five or six hours, I wanna go two, okay? Or I might not meet the rest of the day and let cl, custodians clean it at night. Um, I think there's ways to move around these buildings that will keep our students safe. Because I think, I, I wanna go clear on one thing. Kids are not coming back to USD two ninety in mass volume for the rest of the school year. Am I correct in this?
Yes.
I mean, at, I mean, I think just one thing we can clarify is, schools we know it, with teachers and students and staff and faculty and custodians and classified and subs is over, okay? What we're talking about is two or three percent of the time, we may be asked to have a teacher come in for an hour or two to meet with a few kids occasionally. We won't do that every day, we won't do it for three or four hours a day and, and all that. So if I'm, if I'm understanding this right, it would be that on occasion, rarely, okay? Electively, okay, we might have two or three kids, maybe even just one-on-one. We can practice safe distancing. I called you today and I said, I don't wanna sit next to Julie and put my arm around her, you know? And things like that, and for another six months, okay? So, you know, I guess what I'm just saying is, I won't ask the staff or students to do anything, I've got. So the board tonight is practicing safe social distancing. I think we do the same thing. When we bring these people in, we're going to practice safe social distancing. And so I agree with, uh, Melidia that I'm concerned too, but I'm just, I guess what I wanna make clear is that it's, it's not every day, all day, it's not going to be routine, it's gonna be rare. And, and then I do agree with you, I think it is a moving target. What we're talking about today, I bet you by the time we meet on Monday night and then on the first meeting of April, be totally different.
And, and we, and so one of the things that, that I think we need to understand, and we're getting, we're really getting into this as we get to three point one one, so that Harold is exactly right, days of teachers working eight hours in our building are over for this year. What might happen is that you have, you know, and we'll, we'll utilize OMS, a staff of, of forty instructors. On any given day at OMS, there might be five, eight, ten instructors in the building. It is certainly not going to be all forty instructors there from this time to this time. Because as we go through this process, those teachers are going to be given the latitude to provide instruction the manner that they see best fit. So if on a Tuesday they're providing all Zoom meetings and they can do that from home, don't come to work that day. Let's do those things from home and let's do it, which means that we've got classrooms that are gonna be open, we've got all sorts of things that are gonna happen. We, it may mean that that teacher never sets foot in the building until Friday as we start delivering packets or something. However, they choose to, to do what they need to do, we may not see teachers in our building hardly at all. But if we have some of those that feel the need to, to work with some small groups, again, the latitude to be able to do that gives us some different options to meet our students' needs as we go through this process.
I think it's important that we add a piece maybe to this. In terms of small groups, I think there needs to be some screening criteria. A, are you overwhelmed? B, are you coughing? C, you know, are you, um, have you traveled? D, are you with somebody? Is your sibling got it or your parents got it or whatever? So if you screen out positive, then you don't, they don't come.
So just so that you all know, prior to the pandemic, you're not allowed to do those things in school. During the pandemic, you certainly are, so we would be both in our right to screen students before then.
I think it's important to be.
So what if you have parents that are not on the COVID nineteen train? And they say, well, I want my kid to be in a small group? If you're having these small groups or when people need it or whatever, what about, what if a parent says, my child needs this?
Um, that would be something that we would have to work through.
Unless they're a high grade or they don't have these abilities.
That we, we provide the instruction in a manner that schools see fit. Um, without just being belittled about it, the parents don't get to dictate the manner of instruction that happens at their schools to their students, that's set by this Board of Education. So they can desire that all they want to, if it's not the manner in which we provide instruction for them, then it's not going to be the manner in which we provide it.
We will see a lot of requests starting next week, we will see parents that we recommend services and disagree with or recommend. I mean, a large part of my role the next two weeks will be, um, trying to mediate a lot of those conversations, taking it off of our, our teacher's plate. Um, so we're not stressing them out and talking directly with them, these, I don't care if we want to, we'll offer something different. I know we'll get frustrated with this, I'll hear somebody else is getting something. Um, and part of the whole IP process is, it's gotta be specific to that student's needs, um, and if we're recommending something. And I think in this case, it's gotta both be, it, it's gotta be their needs and it's gotta be in their best interest. I mean, what I'm hearing from all of you is, this should be a last resort, it shouldn't be something that we're throwing out there just because it would make a parent happy, and I'm happy to hold that line and make sure it's a last resort for that.
The message for our staff is that, look at the other options available to us. When we recognize that they're not working, maybe we discuss this option, if it's, if it's a benefit to our kids, if it's not. And honestly, by that time, it may not even be on the table.
Susan, I'll check. I think what KSDE provided us today, the guidance document, I think it actually may add those seem, that's true, those criteria are seen everywhere right now. But I think it was part of their expectation too, if we were adding students and it was representation.
I have a comment and a question at the end. I, I think kind of what Susan was saying, we end this, you know, we say an SOP of pay our school nurse before anyone enters to be a part of whatever group and whatever classroom, kind of screens that person, does the temperature check, whatnot. And then something that Julie I think hit on earlier, see how we provide the teacher or instructor, whoever it's gonna be, meet with those students, some form of PPE that would protect them and maybe feel, make them feel comfortable, or even for the students as well, some sort of mask, um.
They won't have access, they won't, they won't have access to PPE, that's a law, and before you're taking it out of our f- now.
I understand that, but they also passed today, the construction companies even have to give up their mask now. So there, there might be a chance. And if there's a chance to get PPE, what I'm saying is, my gosh, we should provide it.
There may be some work also, it'd be really easy for us to, you know, I know, um, I know where my wife works, they started calling the day before, people that are coming in, going through, asking her those questions, and, um, I think that would be something really easy even for our special ed staff to be able to do.
My.
Um, or psych, school psych care is a way of helping coordinate those, those visits, to be able to call family and do some of that. Even, I can see school nurses helping when they come on psych, but.
My last comment before my question is, is, you know, I don't know what square footage OMS is, but we'll just use it as an example. You know, six by six is thirty-six square feet that we have to be away from like each other. I don't see, in a ten thousand square foot building, I know it's bigger than that, um. I don't see that we cannot not meet what the people that are far smarter than me, health-wise, what they recommend of not exceeding that, especially if we put in an SOP of screening people before they come in. Um, and then our Janders and the new equipment we've gotten on disinfecting that puts the film on the walls and then it gets wiped off. Uh, I feel very comfortable about that. And lastly, my question is, is if we have some of these kids that do need to come in a small group, mom and dad work, how do, and say they are a rural kid, but usually they get dropped off by mom and dad, are we gonna provide plus service for that or will work around it?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Well, then we'll know more when we develop an, an instructional plan. So I think, I think the way that we would go about doing that is that if we get to the point where we need to invite people in, we'll work through the transportation with, with parents, and if we, if we need to go do a pickup.
That's not, that's a question parents are gonna ask.
I'm, I'm sure it's gonna come on multiple times. I, I know that, that we're going to, and, and it's part of the, you know, Harold and I at one point in time talked about, um, you know, before a lot of this really kind of got crazy, um, that you could split your elementary classrooms in half and you could go like eight to eleven with nine kids and, and twelve to three with another nine kids, and, um. Every one of those things puts an additional amount of stress on parents. Um, and, and, and there's gonna be a great deal of stress in all of those situations. If we have to meet with students in that capacity, then we have transportation people that aren't going to be picking kids up every day. And, and there are some opportunities for us to do some things we normally wouldn't do. And we've been very clear that just because you meet around the school or are providing around the school for transportation, but in these times, it may very well be the situation.
Thank you.
We had a lot of discussion about this, does anybody feel comfortable making a motion?
Well, as I sit here and look at the motion, I, I would like to ask a question. Do you think the nature of this motion perhaps is, is broad in nature or perhaps is, well, it's causing some, some distress?
Needs to be.
It needs to be that wrong, okay?
It really does.
Yeah, I don't know how to make it smaller, but I can s.
We're in hot, uncharted waters.
I, I think we are confident enough in our, our administration to know that they're going to, um, use this judiciously and, and not, um, right, yeah, fix that.
I think, I think one of the things that we're getting from our board tonight, as we meet with teachers on Monday to develop this plan, is that we tell them face-to-face meetings are the last resource, absolute last resource. That, and that's what I get out of this, is that if we don't have to do this, we should do this. Um, which means that we make sure that the other avenues of instruction all take place before we even discuss how we might face the face of this.
One other, one other thing that popped in my, my brain was just the issue of, we've hired social workers, we've got really good teachers and parents, and if we need to have classified staff doing something, it would sure be really cool if they read out, reach out to the kiddos and say, I really miss seeing you at school, or give them emotional support, or allow them to vent, there's also gonna be an uptake, I believe, probably a pretty significant uptake, you know, primal views and those type of things, and lack of support. And I think we've gotta somehow, some way, we've got people that aren't working it out, so they're, they're working.
I was saying, one of the things we've heard all week from multiple places has been the importance of addressing social emotional. Um, and I know what we were talking about today, that was just important, as important next week as we work with our staff, uh, as to how are we gonna support them coming in, but I know it's been a conversation with elementary principals, um, and this is by me this morning, just about how do we provide social emotional, um, support? How do we continue the work of social skills we've been doing? Um, how do we get some social interaction and still keep the social distancing peace? How do we do some of those kind of things, um, to students? So I don't know if we have all the answers yet, but it's gotta be a piece.
One of my, my moments was I had to go through this process of being really upset and not, you know, back and forth, back and forth, and realize that this is the new norm, this is a, where the old normal is gone and is a part of time.
Um, maybe this is a Dean question, but have, have we got it figured out yet how we're gonna get those students, maybe elementary, uh, electronics needed to?
We'll have that conversation.
Okay.
Madam President, I view that way of proving that students to be, approved students to be instructed in rooms no greater than ten total, with all the caveats that we've discussed.
So, all in favor, raise your hand. Pass the six and an aqua coast, or pass the six twelve?
Next one is three oh five, event cancellation. I think it's important for us to, to make some public statements about things. Kasia has canceled all their, their spring activities. Um, there are still some things that are floating out there that, that people are questioning for us. Um, one is prom, um, promotion is another one, graduation. We still have some other events, literature festival, those types of things. Um, I think we, recommendation that, that I think we make is one, that we make a public statement that, um, that all of those activities with the exception of graduation, which is an extremely important piece of our students' lives, um, is. Which is an extremely important piece of our students' lives, um, is, is publicly acknowledged as canceled. Um, it, it meets the guidelines that the governor has put out, it meets the guidelines that, um, that other areas have, have begun to put out. Certainly, K A C H A canceling all the remainder of their events falls in line that, that, that K S D has basically said large gatherings should not be taking place in our schools. Um, the caveat to that is graduation, um, and, and the biggest piece of that is that it is a huge milestone for our kids. Our parents have waited seventeen, eighteen years to participate in that with their kids, kids have worked incredibly hard to get to that point. Um, and at this point, we don't know when any moratoriums on schools may be lifted. Um, right now, we know that it's through May twenty-ninth, um, in, in terms of what the governor has indicated. Um, but if we see changes in that for the positive, then there's no reason why as a school district that we can't say we're going to host a graduation in June or July or even the beginning of August if we want to. Uh, the other things, again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to string people, I think there, there needs to be a statement that, that all of those ancillary activities are, are, um, are canceled. With, with graduation, one of the things that we have gotten is, uh, with Jostens, who does all of our graduation announcements and those types of things. All of our seniors have been told that Jostens will reprint their announcement and insert their announcements for any new date that graduation might occur at no cost to our kids. So there's still that piece that, that Jostens recognize that this is a big deal and, and are working with us to, to try to make sure that we can do these things. But I know that I talked to a parent the other day who was taking her child prom dress shopping. Um, I, I really struggle to watch parents go out and spend money on something that we're fairly positive is not going to occur. I think it's important for us to make a public statement that these things are no longer, um, going to be held within our, within our, um, district. With the exception of graduation, which will be postponed until further clarification of, of what is expected in our schools and what we have access to.
Modern technology is at work. When we're speaking, you and Josh and the rest of us, when you pull your microphones forward, I've never seen two texts, the people are not hearing us on YouTube. So modern technology is here, and so please begin to your microphones and let me hear you.
Sure.
So.
We will, we will tie into the sound system next time, it's just this kind of.
Okay, no, I, I appreciate that.
Doctor Cops, can you clarify when you, when you just stated about the events being canceled? That is not a decision that, that you or our, our board is making, that is coming down from what's happening at the state law?
We've basically been told by the, by the governor that all large events that are greater than fifty people cannot take place in any building. Um, none of those events would be less than fifty people. Um, you're, they would, they would all, um, be held to a, to a standard that would certainly be canceled by, um, by the state of Kansas at this point, certainly by K S D. I just want to make sure that people recognize that, um, that as we make these decisions about not coming to school in the same capacity that we have, that we have been. That we recognize that these other events also create issues for public safety. Prom is a perfect example, you, you're going to talk about a thousand people gathering in very close proximity to watch kids come in and out of, of prom. Um, I, one, I don't think the county health department would let us do it. Um, and, and two, I just don't think it's worth continuing the narrative of, of maybe we will and maybe we won't. I think it's important for us to make sure that we, that we publicly announce that all ancillary activities are subsequently canceled. With the exception of graduation, which we're talking about a postponement until further notice.
And we do need to take action on this this evening?
This is the saddest one.
It is, it, it really, look.
If we are the ones canceling it, why do we need to vote on canceling, don't, is it the only thing we would need to vote on would be that we are approving just postponing graduation?
We're voting on, uh, approving the cancellation, like the, what the motion says of the remaining two ninety events, including prom. That's what the motion says.
I know, but the governor doesn't need our approval.
The governor didn't need our approval for the payment of classified staff either, I think the purpose, that, that, that was a mandate that we were going to have to do and we, we, we approved that as a board. I think part of that is for our public to acknowledge that the board supports these things, that this is what we're saying as a board, that these things need to take place for the health of our people. I think that's, that's why I think we would ask the board to approve it.
I, I do kind of oscillate on this, but not really, I just had to say that for my daughter's sake, okay? Um, I, I look at graduation totally different than I do everything else, so I appreciate that the motion is that we postpone graduation until a date which is feasible to hold it. Unfortunately, I do agree, if we sat up here for nearly an hour and a half, we talked about protecting our staff, we talked about limiting the access to our building, we talked about protecting our students. If, if we're going to keep that in the same vein, unfortunately, I believe prom and other ancillary deals fall in the same category. That may mean I can't go home tonight, but what I'm saying is, is that I do think genuinely we do need to say, for the health and welfare of our students, our staff. Our, uh, uh, community, that unfortunately some events are not mandatory to hold. And I've even oscillated to say, is there any way you can say that prom could be delayed or postponed, I'm not so sure that's a viable option. And so as much as I would like to say, you know, we can delay prom or whatever, I'm not so sure that's viable. So unless somebody else has a viable option, I agree that I think we have to say graduation can happen anytime between now and August when we can gather together. And the other ancillary events along with sports, uh, unfortunately not in twenty twenty.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
My second motion, and I just hope the girls have kept all the texts on their presses.
All in favor, raise your hand. Now passes seven out.
All right, so let's get to the nuts and bolts of why we're here, and, um, the reality of it is that we're going to outline how the plan will take place. Not that we have the answers to how we're going to provide instruction. Um, that will be driven by our teachers via an outline of how we can provide it. Okay, so, uh, we were given guidelines from the state, they really gave us three options. Small group instruction, which we had a conversation about, and, and certainly does not seem to be the manner in which our board would like us to have our, as our number one option. Um, or even a viable option until all other options are exhausted. The second would be that we provide packets for students. Um, and there are a number of different ways that we can provide packets, but in essence, a packet option that might be a weekly take-home for students. We have avenues for teachers to communicate back and forth about what's in those packets with kids. At the end of the week, they bring their packets in, they drop them off, we give them a new packet for the following week, and we work through the next seven weeks in that model. The third one would be a, um, a remote learning environment, um, in which we use Zoom or other technologies to communicate back and forth with our kids in a learning capacity. Or for a combination of, of the three. Those were the guidelines really provided by this, uh, continual learning task force that, um, that put a, a very large document together with a lot of, of supporting documents in about three days. They did an incredible amount of work, um, in a very short amount of time. Um, what, what we are proposing, we met with, um, building administrators today to talk about exactly how we wanted to maneuver through this situation. So we have, we have called our staff back to work on Monday. Um, again, you guys know that, that the expectation of staff is not that we have all of our staff congregating in one place. But, um, I think most buildings will talk about their staff coming in later than our normal start time. And our B L T team members meeting initially in the morning. So in most buildings, that might be that B L T meets at eight o'clock and other teachers don't come until maybe nine o'clock. The conversation with the B L T will go through what the guidelines are, and they will identify what we want to accomplish and a, and a message to send to our staff in terms of how we want to develop the learning environment for our kids. We're going to put that in the hands of our teachers to develop, they're the experts on how we drive instruction. They need to be the ones who identify what it is that we need to learn in terms of essential standards. Um, how, how they feel comfortable driving that instruction, not everybody is going to feel comfortable doing Zoom meetings. Um, but whatever it is that we're doing is consistent across the board. So it's not that a first grade teacher at Garfield is doing something completely different than a first grade teacher at Lincoln. What it might mean is the first grade teacher at Lincoln is comfortable doing it through Zoom. But the teacher at Garfield may be doing some different type of packet and working via telephone and, and other things. But the information being shared is the same. Um, so as we meet on Monday, we start developing that plan. The B L T then splits out into their, into either their departments or their grade levels. We don't have an apartment or a grade level that's greater than ten, so we can certainly meet in those small groups, still follow the guidelines that the county has set for us. Remember that the county identified that our staff can continue to work. And that was a part of the release that they had on Saturday, was that it is okay for staff members to continue to work in this environment. So as they come in, part of what we need to develop is, one, what, like I said, what do we want students to learn? They will identify what those essential standards are, how we're going to do it. Um, and the method in which they're going to drive that instruction, and they're going to present that back to our administrators to make sure that it meets all of our expectations in delivering instruction to our kids. It's going to take multiple days to work through this. So what may happen on Monday is that we develop the guidelines and expectations, teachers go home, they take the resources with them, they need to build those things. Maybe they work from home in that capacity, maybe they continue to work at school, that's their decision at that point in time. As long as they're meeting our expectations and developing the plan for their kids. And then we have, um, our information ready for students the following Monday, close to thirty. So they've got a full week of plan, we can, we can talk about P D and training our staff in certain areas if they don't know how to use Zoom. We have, we have training available for them, if they don't know how to do particular things or they want to know more information on something else. Dean is an incredible resource, Amy and Josh have been working the tails on them all week to make sure that we can provide P D for them. This would not be whole group P D, we would say, what do you need, let us know, we've provided in small groups for them. Maybe some other people know how to do it, they can share that information back and forth with their peers and, and take care of, take care of our teachers in, in whatever capacity they need taken care of. Um, until we really know, um, what it is that teachers feel is most important for students to learn, we work under the guidelines that in K through five. We're talking about math and reading. And this, we're, we're not spending a lot of time on science and social studies here. The guidelines from K S D E were that we're talking about thirty minutes a day, pre-K and one, uh, pre-K and K.
Yeah, thirty minutes for pre-K, K one is forty-five minutes, two, uh, second, third is sixty minutes, fourth and fifth is ninety minutes. And then sixth through seventh is thirty minutes per teacher, three hours maximum in one day, so that's going to be the bigger challenge.
So we recognize here that this is not an eight-hour school day that we're trying to fill up here. That this is about making sure that we get our kids the information that they need to maintain over the course of this closure. When we get to the high school, it becomes something different, so elementaries are going to maintain predominantly with math and reading. High school has to get through credits, right, and they're different than everyone. Our students still have to meet competencies to earn credits, so most likely what we'll be talking about is developing packets specific to a kid in a particular class. So it might be different for each kid here, for instance, if we're taking geometry. If we passed third quarter geometry, maybe our packet is weekly for geometry at this point forward. And our teachers have already done some reverse learning and some videos and some different things, maybe we get better at that in this environment. But we do have some options and some knowledge as to how we, how we teach from home. If students don't have access to the internet, which is very few of our kids at the high school, there are a number of different agencies right now that if they contact us and let us know, we can put them in touch with, and are providing internet services in their homes. Um, there are a lot of things happening across the nation to take care of our kids in schools. But that packet might mean that, um, that we're working through this thing for geometry if, and we can identify how it's different for each kid. If we didn't meet our expectations third quarter, then maybe some of those packets also take care of some of those things that we had gaps in before. And we start, we start working through those things to earn that credit at the end. We can do that with all of our elective courses, we can do it with all of our core courses. So we're talking about math and reading, writing at the elementary level, the high school level still has to work through all of their courses in order to achieve credits. Seniors absolutely must meet the competencies to earn the credits for graduation. This is, well, it, it can't be a guinea, the state is expecting us not for it to be a guinea. And we have to follow up with some things, um, to show that we're meeting with kids regularly, that we're providing appropriate education for them, all of that is a part of that waiver plan. They're going to ensure that there is documentation that is associated with it in order for us to, to meet the guidelines in that way. The middle school will probably be more similar to the high school, each of those classes is different in the way that it, that it is provided. Um, but the, those, those will probably be packet materials as well. Now, when we talk about packets, when you, when you talk about the three different options, just because we provided packet doesn't mean that that packet isn't delivered through Zoom. So it may be a combination of the technology and, and the other aspects that we have associated with it. Um, but over the course of the next week, our teachers are going to be narrowing their scope. We have spent a lot of time and a lot of the work that we did prior, prior to this closure with developing essential standards and understanding our scope and sequence very well. It's really going to be a benefit to our teachers at this point, they should know exactly what do I have to have my kids know in order for them to be prepared for next year? And not have this gap because we didn't cover this topic. Um, so that's the plan, that's what at least the process for our teachers to develop what instruction is going to look like for kids at this point to be. The, the commissioner and the governor were both very clear that a building closure did not mean that schools were closed. Right, and, and, and sometimes we interchange those statements. The expectation for learning is continuing across the state of Kansas, and we're all going to be held accountable for it. It is the expectation that all of our students participate, we will communicate with them about what their participation is. We will communicate with parents about how we communicate, or how we participate, um, and engage kids in this learning process. And when it's not working, we find workarounds for it and we continue to, to get better at our craft. If there were ever a time when we embraced this notion of redesign, this is it. Because there isn't a piece of education that is going to look like it did prior to spring break. Everything is going to be very different. Our teachers are, are incredibly talented people, they know exactly what our students need to learn from this point forward. Some of them are really, really good at providing, um, remote learning options, they're really good at it. And this will be an opportunity for our teachers to work together and, and figure out how that works. Some of them should not. I mean, it, it, it's going to be more difficult for them to work in that environment than maybe it's worth over the course of seven weeks. Maybe those teachers are more paper packets. However, it has to work for them and what is best suited for them to instruct our kids, we want to give them the latitude to be able to do some. But it will be their responsibility over the course of the next five days, starting on Monday, to develop what a weekly plan looks like and, and, and probably not deviate beyond a week. We can start looking at it, but what we know is that what happens this week might be different than what we can do next week. So we have to be able to maneuver very quickly and not get ahead of ourselves that all of a sudden we go, oh my God, I made all of these plans for seven weeks down the road and we only made it through two weeks. I don't want our staff to spend a whole lot of time on something that doesn't come to fruition. But we should be able to communicate with them effectively enough to see how these things continue to progress, to know that we might not be able to do packets anymore. Or that we might not be able to do this during this time, whatever it happens to be, we need to be flexible enough that we can maneuver through those things. That is the plan for us to develop what instruction is going to look like. It is going to be in the hands of our teachers, our principals are ready to get staff together on Monday to start working through how that, how that's going to work. I have heard from a number of teachers that are ready to get going. Um, we've actually had to calm them down a little bit to let us stop communicating with, with parents about what you're going to do because we don't know what it is yet. Stop communicating with your students about what your expectations are because we haven't even received the guidelines yet. I'm happy that they're doing these things, but we didn't really know what the expectations coming from K S D were going to be. I'm happy that they're doing these things, but we didn't really know what the expectations coming from KSDE were going to be. Now we do, now we have the opportunity to get our staff back together. And now we'll have the opportunity to fully communicate what is expected of us moving forward.
Two questions, well, just one really. You said this, this might give some kids an opportunity to catch up on skills that perhaps they missed in the third quarter. Would this also give kids an opportunity to quiz out, for lack of a better word, if, if they could accelerate?
So one, one of the things that, that we were told by KSDE was that if our students can prove that they have the competencies to meet the end requirements for that class, we can be done. So if we can, if we can do that, then we give them the grade and they're done with that class. End of school. So A, A person actually asked about assessments and said, we've given an assessment that would show that all the students in our building have met these requirements. Are we good to go? And the answer was yes. So yeah, if you can show that they've met those competencies, then yeah. We don't have that ability, so we're going to do some different things. But certainly our teachers will have the opportunity to utilize what they want kids to know. If they know it, they're good to go. This isn't about just giving kids work to do. And this is about making sure that we teach them and that they show us what they've, in a sort, in a very, in a very narrow focus.
What's gonna happen to like the specials, you know, the tech, the library, the music, PE, almost all those?
I think, I think we're gonna continue to ask and, and ask Amy to, to come up and join us. But like, our, if, if we're stuck in an environment that doesn't allow us to get out and communicate with people. And that's really what this is coming down to, right? And our community is gonna go through a lot of these things. Then what we can ask of our specials and different things is to provide resources for families to do some of these things. Here's some fun music things that you guys can do together. Here's some fun reading things you guys can do together. It, it may not be about, here's this instructional platform that I wanna provide for you. But here are some things that you can do musically that would allow you to do some things together. It would keep, um, the senses going from a musical standpoint. We all know that it's good for instruction, especially from a, from a, um, from a music standpoint. So at the elementary level, I think we ask them to do some of those things. At the middle school and high school level, they still have to, they still have to make it through those classes. Now, from a PE standpoint, that may look very different, right? Because we're not providing a lot of instruction in PE. A lot of it is about physical activity. So maybe to earn that credit in PE, and again, our teachers will determine this, but maybe it's just a law. Show me that over the course of the week, you did enough to equate to five miles of walking or, or thirty minutes of excessive heart rate by doing these things. Maybe in culinary class, it's that you provided a meal, you have to take a picture of it, send it to Mrs. Go and say, this is what I did. Here's the recipe that I used. Maybe you draw correlations to something you learned in class. There are a lot of different ways that we can go about doing it to where they still recognize that even though they're doing things at home, they're learning along with it in, in the same manner in which we would be doing it in an instructional platform in class. So we're gonna get a little, um, a little crazy on this. And we're gonna try to be very innovative with how we do things. And again, not just give things away, but have some accountability that goes along with this to make sure that we still get kids getting, getting active. We're not just sitting home playing video games all day. That we have them participating in family functions, that families are participating where their kids have a learning process. And we can facilitate that for them through this continual learning.
Well, some, as, as we've gone through this, and you know, you're on, you're on Facebook, but, you know, some of these drama kids and music kids from other places, not Ottawa necessarily, have just really brought smiles to my face and made me laugh out loud. And I think those kids are maybe gonna be the ones that get us through this.
And I think what we wanna make sure that, that our teachers understand too, that you're not just taking your lesson plans that you maybe have already planned for the next two weeks and you're just pushing that out to the kids. We want them to also think in a different manner as to how can our kids demonstrate that they're understanding in certain things that they're, um, instructing with them in different ways, whether it's project or whether it's a, so that it doesn't all, it's not just we're giving them the work that they had already planned for after spring break. But now let's think a little differently about what is, not only what are our essential standards, but what's critical of those essential standards? Because we're gonna have to pare it down. And for middle and high, they, they, if they only have three, if, if our guideline is three hours over the course of the day, they may, they really may have to pare down because those, those kids have multiple courses that they're having to make sure that they're gaining credits for. So, so there's really a lot that we need to, that we'll be working through in developing this plan to make sure it works for not only our teachers, but for our students and our parents.
So if I understand right, um, it's, starting out kindergarten, it's like thirty minutes total, not for math and not. And you work your way up to fifth grade, it's ninety minutes total, okay? And then you're working your way up through the middle school. When you get to be a senior, okay, or in the high school, it's three hours total. So you'll have to go back to your last point. You'll have to help your teachers understand that isn't, you know, somehow there's gotta be a correlation or not correlation, that's a bad word. There has to be some communication between teachers to say, you know, I'm doing this and this, you know what I mean? Because I, I think that would be a difficult thing to manage, but I, I'm gonna leave it up to you to do it.
So if you ever spend enough time searching for the positives in every situation, we have struggled to help our staff recognize what homework load does to our kids for a long time. Right? And we have constantly worked through this process to try to say, hey, look, an hour's worth of math homework every night does not do our kids any justice. And we have an hour's worth of math homework and an hour's worth of English homework and an hour's worth of chemistry homework and an hour's worth of French homework and an hour's worth of government homework. You got five hours worth of homework and you don't get home until five o'clock. It doesn't leave you time for anything else. This is going to be our opportunity to really identify what is important for our kids to learn and recognize that our core teachers are not going to be able to send home an hour's worth of work every night because we've gotta figure out how to condense seven periods into three hours. Right? And let's be honest, if we get three hours of, out of our kids in this environment, we all wanna be taking the jewels. And let's be honest, because I know my kid sitting home in eighth grade and if, if he's not putting in three hours worth of work. That much I can, that much I can guarantee. Right? So if we can get something positive out of our kids and listen by them and we can ensure that our teachers feel good about the essential learning components that we need to cover in the next seven weeks, and I would call that a victory for us moving forward, especially if we can start school on time in August. If that is not the situation, then I think whatever plan that we have in place right now, we reevaluate in August and we start looking at, how long is this one gonna last? And how do we really provide instruction? And we take some of these things that we've learned, especially from a technological standpoint, and we apply them in even, even greater magnitude to really begin to drive instruction in August if we're continuing down this road and we're not allowed to start school that way. Which is obviously a possibility in terms of, of what's being discussed. Not to add a different layer to this, not to, the hundred and eighty people watching at home. It's certainly a discussion. That's not what we're worried about at this point. We're gonna get through May fourteenth first.
Well, I have the greatest of faith in our teachers and I know that they've actually been thinking about this all spring break.
Yes. Oh, yes. Our teachers, and the, the sad part of it is that our teachers didn't really, most of our teachers didn't really get a spring break.
No, they did.
Um, they, this has been, I know that Megan O'Neil has been communicating with teachers of the OA president for quite some time about different issues that, that may come up. And we'll, we'll continue to work through some of those things and ensure that we're doing the best for our staff all along the way. But once, once the decision was made on Saturday by the Franklin County Health Department to, to close our schools, the, the minds of our teachers started turning like crazy and, and trying to figure out what, one, what is gonna be expected of us? How are we going to do it? And what is it that we need to get our kids to do in the meantime? And now we're going to get to watch them work and it's gonna be pretty awesome to watch them work because we do have an incredible staff. They're gonna do great things and, and our kids are gonna be the benefactor percent of it.
Okay, I'm very comfortable that we're wanting six through twelve. And we alluded to this question earlier, so I'm picking back on somebody. And I'm sure we can improve upon that over time. You mentioned there's some options, internet in homes and aren't in internet. Dean's done a great job providing the packs. And if you have cell phone coverage, you get internet. So I think there's a couple of issues there. If this is an opportunity, I know it's difficult to do elementary by Chromebook. If, if it is difficult in the high school and OMS, it's certainly going to be difficult in K through tw- uh, five. Is there any thought about doing any Chromebooks? Probably not this year, I, I'm assuming. But, um, what's kind of, is there any thought being discussed yet about using Chromebooks in elementary?
And Dean can come up here with it if he wants. We have enough devices for every student in our district to have them. If we wanted to deploy them that way, we could. We could also utilize, um, something that's maybe more friendly to the environment, especially in, in pre-K and K with iPads and whatnot. We have, we have opportunities to deploy there as well. I think it's awfully difficult to ask a kindergarten kid to learn on a, on a digital platform. I think what we can do, if we wanted to provide it that way, was send parents home with different websites that they could go to to do different games, different learning games, different things. And certainly all of that counts, right? Internet. As long as we keep the mind going and we continue to learn, then, then we can do, we can do all of those things. So if we needed to deploy in that manner, we certainly could, we have the capabilities. Four, fourth grade and fifth grade currently have all of the students' devices in their classrooms. So it would, it would take next to nothing to simply contact the parents, say, please come to school, pick up a device. This is, this is Johnny's device. Bring it back to school next year. And it wouldn't be any different than what we do with, with everybody else. We would have to tear down some carts and do some different things to make sure we had devices, three down through kindergarten. But we can do it, we can certainly do it. Then we have to deal with the connectivity issues and all of those things. But that's why we have Dean who's incredible back there. But we certainly have the capability to go down that path. And that'll be a conversation that we'll need our, our teachers to engage in about what we wanna do at those young people.
I think it's important to understand too, the recommendations from KSDE and that we will also continue to recommend is that we, we would encourage our teachers to use what they've already been using versus introducing a whole lot of newness to parents, a whole lot of newness to kids. If they haven't been utilizing certain things electronically, a lot of them have. So we encourage them to go ahead and continue to use that with their kids. So we, we understand this is pretty stressful for parents too. And we want teachers to remember that too, as they're determining what the packets are gonna look like or what their learning is gonna look like, that we're not turning our, um, expecting so much from our parents that they're completely frustrated on what they're teaching with their kids.
Okay, so bingo, you just hit, the number one is I think we do need to provide parents, and I love the help button and not just where it gets. I could see myself in that help button going, I have no idea what to do here. So I think that's great, I like the idea of having people monitor that and saying, let me send it this way or that way. Not necessarily have to reply back that minute. Uh, but then a different kind of question is, not every kid in, in our district unfortunately is going to buy into this.
Right.
Okay? And so I guess the question is, what do we do about the kid? You know, obviously we want every kid all one hundred percent to buy in and accept the online learning or packet or whatever. Is there any thought process of?
Well, that, that will be something that we can talk with our teachers about also, is that have them, they're going to probably, know who that might possibly be. Uh, and that they could be contacting those families just by phone possibly. And we're also talking about ways that if that's, whether that's here, we don't, we don't want them to have to divulge their cell phone number. So we've talked about ways that they can do that without, um, parents necessarily knowing what their cell phone number is. Uh, but, but to reach out to their students, um, uh, if not daily, weekly, based on whatever their class size is. Uh, and that if there are kids there, there that are not hearing from, that they try to contact parents and see if they need help or support or whatever the case may be. So, yeah, we, we will address that too.
We, we created a list of, of expectations, and principals will go through some of those things with the teachers. I'll talk to this, so if somebody doesn't sit in another text. Thank you for that. But one of them was that in recognizing that we're not going to spend the volume of hours in the classroom that we would be otherwise, nor is the, the workload that we're going to be providing the same as it would be otherwise, that the expectation to communicate with parents is going to be exponentially higher than it was prior to. In this model that, that KSDE and the state of Kansas is, is, has ultimately created for us, we cannot do so without parent support. If a kid just chooses to disengage, I mean, all of the things that we know to hold accountability comes from being in the environment. That, that's what our teachers are trained on. They're, they're trained on classroom management, they're trained on, on building relationships, they're trained on, we're going to be in an environment where we don't necessarily have access to them in that same capacity. Nor do we have the ability to say, hey, look, you're on the basketball team, so I'm gonna go talk to your coach and see if I can't get a little help here. I mean, all of those things that we knew before are now between us, parents. We have to do a great job of communicating with parents. And we have to let them know that these things are important. That, that, that the success of their student is going to be dependent upon how much we can engage in this process, right? And the process is, is very different, right? And it, it is, I think Randy Watson said it best. At no point will we be able to replicate the success of learning that we had in our Kansas schools through this model. The intent is not to replicate the success that we have. The intent is to make sure that we can spend the time, that we can get our kids through to next and then be able to pick up the pieces once schools are back in normal session. So we'll have to do a, a lot of that and a lot of communicating to ensure that we can do so.
I, I will acknowledge it's hard to teach for children, for me it was. I mean, I'd teach something all day and I'd go home and show them how to do it and all of a sudden I didn't know.
Well, we wanna make sure, we wanna make sure that our intention here is not to put the learning on the parents. And I think what we're going to need parents help with is to help them carve out the time to make learning important for them. So we can, we'll do the things we need to from an instructional standpoint, but making sure that parents can say, hey, look, we need to sit down and do math today. So what's your teacher saying about math? Here's our math time to get this done. That we can do that and that we just don't brush it off and say, eh, we'll do the, we'll do all the packets on Friday and stuff. So, um, I think, I think it's important for us.
I feel that kids are looking to their parents for guidance right now because their whole worlds have just been turned upside down. And I also feel that parents feel a responsibility now for their kids. So I think that it is our duty to equip the parents the best we can. So, and Susan mentioned, you know, social, emotional and new risks that will increase. And so I would like to see, you know, especially with the younger kids, like if the teachers would just maybe provide activities, you know, because you see all those websites, like you were mentioning Facebook, it's just like overwhelming. And you go and you go to that website and then there's like ten million things and nothing's linked together. And you think, well, why can't I just do this as seamlessly as a teacher does and just have all these beautiful activities, you know? So if they could just kind of help guide parents, I think that would really help them maybe even lower the stress that might be coming at them.
One of our, our expectations for elementary will be the reading, math and social, emotional. And our counselors can help with that by doing some activities with Boys Townscales and the things that they bring along. So that's, that's our hope. And there will be probably many questions that our teachers come up with as we start getting together that we'll need to address.
Our social workers are gonna be very busy during this time. Yep.
Right.
They're gonna be very busy.
I would just like to say, I didn't even choose to speak about the devices. I would like to see at least the fourth and fifth grade be issued theirs. They're used to using them at school and they could handle, at, at least fifth graders I know would be able to handle, you know, a, a Zoom meeting with their teacher. And, and I think that we should provide that for them. You talked about the social workers, are, will they be making a renaissance, do you think, or?
We, again, we will not ask any of our teachers to do that.
The social workers?
Yeah, we consider our social workers to be teachers in a number of different capacities. But I, I don't think we're going to say, you need to go home and check on this kid. What I do know is that they're social workers. And something tells me that Ms. Sally is going to be a very hard person to tell that she's not allowed to go do something because she, Sally kind of does what she wants to do anyways. So she's an incredible social worker. If she feels like her kids need something from her, I don't know that it's going to matter when I tell her to do it. She's going to go, she's going to go. But that, that is not, we're not going to say, hey, social workers, start making homeless. I don't think that's been any, any part of our conversation.
She started, so Saturday, once we, our announcement, I started giving texts from her, I can do this, we can do this. Shannon and I are meeting with our social workers on Monday as well. And part of that will be trying to put some expectation in to keep them, we're going to have, we're going to have to rein them in. Because we, like we talked about earlier, we want to make sure we're keeping our staff safe. But they'll have a big role. And when a normal school day happens, it's a lot of social, emotional. At this point, I think it's going to really shift to a more traditional role of a social worker in coordinating services and connecting to community resources. So they'll be a really valuable piece for us to have over the next couple of weeks.
There's going to be a lot more need that's coming from, from families here than, than maybe we've ever seen in our community. We haven't had a major disaster here for as long as, as I can remember. I know that they've, they've happened here in our, in our community. But it's been a long time since we've seen infrastructure begin to change in terms of, of what we've needed for people. We're going to see families without jobs. We're going to see, maybe, this is happening in, in my house right now with, with Abby being a nurse. But she's basically been told that all elective surgeries are not happening anymore. We're not going back to work. And so this is not just happening in my house. This is going to happen in a number of houses. And as, as that, as that income begins to dry up, the needs for our services in other, in other areas are going to be far greater. Our social workers do an incredible job of this. And, and we've got communities in schools still to provide some of those services and make sure that we can, we can correlate function. And, and I know that Sally and Darnell and all of our social workers are going to, are going to work extremely hard to make sure that all of our parents and our students know that in times of crisis, when they don't know where to turn, the first page should be our social workers. And our social workers can then help them navigate through all of the other pieces that they'll need to navigate through. We are so lucky to have, to have the staff that we do in terms of a, a social work environment. Think if this would have happened three years ago and we didn't have any of those people in place, the things that we would be trying to rely upon our community to provide for our kids that we wouldn't be able to do on the ground. And we just don't have to worry about that. Not, not that we don't have workers, but certainly we have people that we can rely on to navigate those obstacles.
So next week, one of the things that we've talked about having to do is start to reach out to the other agencies in town. Some of Elizabeth Layton Center, for example, they're talking through what services look like from their standpoint as well while all this is going on. So starting just to kind of regroup and see what's even available in our community. How are they delivering services? How can we help in facilitating that? I know they've got a list of priority students and families that even next week, while we're kind of in the planning phase, they will start to reach out to, you know, so there, there'll be plenty for them to do over the next couple of weeks.
I know I'm getting into the weeds here, but counselors said we'll probably be part of that.
Absolutely.
I had one more question to answer. It was a long time ago that you said this. But as far as the teachers coming in, I know I've had some people reach out to me when they're concerned about that. Have you had teachers contact you saying they are unable to come in or they do not feel comfortable to come in?
So I've sent out multiple messages to staff and had several responses about people who have underlying health concerns, people who are now mandatory quarantined because they've traveled outside of the state to either California or Florida or wherever it happens to be. So we've had, we've pushed that information to principals to make sure that they know. Our, our expectation is that if, if they have underlying health issues, you're not coming in. But it doesn't mean that you don't have the expectation to perform your duties as a child. So we will, we will communicate with them digitally and make sure that they can participate in the creation of this plan with their, with their staff. So let's just say that it's a, a fifth grade teacher who is not sick or anything, but because they went to California there in a fourteen day quarantine. We can hook up Zoom meetings for them. They can participate in the same capacity that everybody else is just through technology. Make sure that we can provide them the resources that they need and they can begin to build that, that lesson plan for their kids moving forward. They're just going to do it from home and not from home. Everybody else, we would, we want to be able to try and bring people together in part, bring back a little normalcy, but also to make sure that they can communicate with us more effectively, face to face communication, especially at times of crisis often works better. So we want to make sure that the vast majority of our staff is, is hearing very clearly what our expectations are. And the vast majority of our staff are ready to come back. Nearly all of them that I've talked to, with the exception of, of maybe seven or eight that have underlying health conditions or, or, or are expected to quarantine, have been, let's get, let's get this, let's get started and let's go. So I think they're excited for the challenge. Maybe that's the wrong way to put it. I think they're ready for a challenge. I don't know that they're excited for a challenge. But this is, this is going to be something that we're really going to see our teachers show their greatness. And, and I don't have any depth of their incompetence, but zero points whatsoever.
Dr. House, I just wanted to add, I don't think our expectation is, is that each teacher does this alone. They're not, they're not planning their plan for their kids alone. So if they work together as a grade level team, if they have someone at home, that person might be doing something that's more that on the electronic or developing something while the others are actually making copies that are at school. So it's, it's really a teamwork. We have to figure out how that's going to work best for everybody.
Yes. Just a couple of comments. So I think it's great, we're going to be able to provide a device if someone doesn't have a device. I think it's great that there's opportunities now in this day and age to provide internet if somebody doesn't have the internet. I did not know when I asked Dean several weeks ago, when we started talking about trying to get to that point of adding more devices to our stockpile that, that would maybe happen sooner than we all thought. I think today, this is going to make us closer and stronger as a school and as a community. And I think, you know, this is horrible, but we need to start trying to think of the positive, how this pulls us together, we unite and figure out, you know, this is a new normal and we're going to have to figure out, and it's going to be a roller coaster at times, but we're going to get through it.
One last question, and you're probably going over a staff, but I'm assuming, Mindy, you'll cover if some, if a teacher needs time off, they still have the ability to request time off through their normal procedures and things like that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So Zoom will be a set time or like recordings? I had somebody send a text asking that. I guess we need to clarify.
In terms of how our teachers are going to do it?
Yeah, how we're going to do Zoom.
So we're, we're, we will not dictate that from this office.
Okay.
So it, it will come from, from their teachers. So all of our parents can expect over the course of the next week to probably be flooded with information from, from parents and teachers as, as we start working through this. And I would guess that each of those individual teachers will really start reaching out to parents and this is what you can expect from me. I'm going to do these things, here's how you can reach out to me. We will have these Zoom meetings. Maybe they do it at, at the same time, every, every day at eleven o'clock, we're going to do these Zoom meetings. Or maybe they even do them in the evening when parents are home. Right, so the, the, again, the normalcy of schools is very different. Maybe we see a whole lot of teachers that start sleeping until eleven o'clock every day and, and their hours are now like from, from one to midnight or something like that. They'd be more like me, sending out emails at three in the morning.
This would be something with Dean, if we have to have another meeting similar to this because of the protocols that are put out by the health departments, we have a platform where people that don't maybe have some of our phone numbers can email or shoot a text or something across. Because some of the questions I've asked your ones and people just happen to have my phone number and sent me a text.
I think it's great, not to interrupt, John, circle, go ahead. I think it's great that in short order, we've been talking to the board, how do we communicate with the public better? So we closed our meeting tonight to the public and yet we opened it to the public in a new format. Now, it may not be perfect, like you said, there's ways to implement that, right? But a few of us know that the public is really listening tonight. I think that's great. We know that tomorrow's going to be a lot of people getting on and having questions. I love the idea that you have an help button, we'll repeat this very loudly. There's go, on USD two ninety dot edu, there's going to be help button. And somebody's going to man that, you know? And I think that's a great tool as well. So I think the neat thing about this is technology really will play a role in this and help everybody.
I want to echo something is, we're very fortunate to have Dean as our guy.
And my team.
And your team, I understand, you know, you can't do it all by yourself. And now we're losing the free help from the high schools since they won't be there. So I just cracked up, those guys like to tell us how they were free help. But you and your team, I mean, rock star job, man, thank you.
Thank you.
I did receive a text regarding the A C T meeting that was to be administered as.
Done, so just so you know, all assessments have been canceled. So the A C T, A C T put out a statement that they have canceled their, their assessments during this time. State assessments have been canceled. So there, we will not be providing, we will not be providing any of those assessments for our students.
Thank you.
Mike mentioned a few quick things.
Yep.
Few quick things. We, we've been saying a lot of Zoom. Zoom would be what we would be doing. Technology for us is very much about redundancies. We plan for things, we plan for the unknown. And right now we're planning for capacity purposes as the entire United States is shifting to Zoom. So we have spun up Zoom, Google Hangouts, another option called Big Blue Button we're experimenting with, Screencastify and Woom. So all of these will be ready to go, but not necessarily used, but at the ready. Because we don't know what tomorrow holds, what tomorrow next week holds. We haven't got these options in place. A big thing for us is student access. We've worked with the city of Ottawa because they are our S R S provider to kind of limit the impact on our network. Every single piece of student traffic from their Chromebook comes to our network, no matter where they are, then leads our network to its intended destination. And that's a huge load, bandwidth wise, that we're going to probably double very rapidly. So we can kind of alleviate that with some network tricks that we'll put in place here for the student. The city of Ottawa also has open public Wi-Fi at Forest Park and City Park and O M A. They will have to use some of these things too. Additionally, we are planning to put Wi-Fi in our parking lots, at the high school, at Lincoln and at Garfield, currently is the plan, where we'd have somewhere where you could go if you needed to, last resort, park in a parking lot, sit in your car, download your content, go back home, work offline. As far as devices in the Chromebooks and iPads, we have, we have tons. It will just come down to having enough spares for us to manage repairs and hand them in and out and making sure we're not going every single student just because we can. Because as we talked about tonight, maybe devices aren't great for a kid. The dashboard is not up yet, it will be up soon. That dashboard will be kind of a landing page for everything, questions, if there's transportation questions or food service questions. Or there's a big help button. It is literally a giant help button that you click and talk to someone immediately. That will be up very, very soon. We are also pushing teachers to, thinking, just alluding to this earlier, but to protect their cellphone number. We don't want them putting their cellphone number out if they don't want to. We don't want them feeling the need to use their cellphone to contact a parent. They can always come in, use the phone here. Google Voice also allows us to give them Google Voice phone numbers that they can give out without, when the parents call that Google Voice number, it falls for their phone. But there's some tricks there because it's not really allowed for us to use. Lydia, you did mention the different tools and utilities to set home for parents to use. We have to make sure that we are very cognizant with our staff that HIPAA, SIPA, COPPA, FERC, all of those don't apply. And a lot of those, we have provisions for, the stuff we've been signing up for rapidly, we have to do these data sharing agreements if we're sending them information. So we will tell parents, I mean, they're fully allowed to do that themselves. They can click the button, it's like they're just getting up and something. But when there is an art cap, there are a few rules that we'll have to tell them to be aware of as far as privacy is concerned. So we'll try to look out for people and put out some guiding documents regarding that. The last thing that we want to talk about is we're, we're developing internal communication pieces as well that our staff can use to talk amongst groups, to talk amongst all third grade teachers at once, have a thread discussion that's just internal only, that says, hey, how can we help this? How can we support this? There's also the peer help desk, so teachers can help each other. How to use Screencastify if we have those power users in the building already. We also are going to use that for really just socializing. If we have a spot where teachers can just feel that normalcy, where they can talk to someone and just keep going through the day. And I think that's going to be a real benefit tool for our staff. Any questions technology wise?
Yes.
Okay, so it's great, we're going to send home Chromebooks or devices. Do we have enough covers and protectors or do we need to order a few?
We have a bunch of the always on cases, but they are a certain size, they're a thirteen inch device. So maybe that thirteen inch device won't work the eleven inch very well, but yeah, fine. So we'll, we'll look into that. We have a bunch of stuff still, like the spare.
Do we, do we need to approve something to allow you to get more?
I don't think so, not currently. Supply chains are all kind of wrecked right now. I can assure you right now that we will not be buying Chromebooks this year.
Oh, no.
Probably won't happen. So we'll, we'll see what we can get rolling as far as device, as cases are concerned. We'll look into that, make sure we have a marketing account to see if we have the good access.
Good question.
As far as when teachers do assign things or the packets or whatever, will the parents know what kids are supposed to be doing?
That'll be up to the buildings. A lot of our buildings use Google Classroom currently, even at the elementary level. So they have that list of things that they can't be doing. There is a parent tie-in piece to Google Classroom that we'll start to push that lets the parent have notifications of what the student's doing in the classroom. What's due, what's coming up. I'm not as well first in that, we have our educators that do that part. But that will mostly be a building's certain decision guidance from us.
Carol?
Is there still public access at Hawthorne School?
Yes.
Okay, that's another one. For people to know that there is a public access, if they go in the parking lot there, they can ping off of it and download stuff.
Perfect. Just a few questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Will the students still be required to turn those devices in the last day of school or is there a plan in place for that?
We've talked about this a little bit. Probably should make it public.
Turn off the cameras.
The lifespan of the device that our seniors currently have is, is getting awfully close to end of life expectancy. Every other student can bring their device back to us at the beginning of next year. And anybody that's not will work through that. But we're at least having some conversations that maybe this year seniors just keep their Chromebooks and we, we let them move on, that, that they're almost at end of life anyways. So maybe that's what we do and then we just tell everybody else, keep them for the remainder of the summer, bring it back next year. We work at how they filter back down to the buildings to make sure that we've got enough devices for everybody. But that'll, that'll be a piece of what we have to address.
Count down the numbers because again, coming back next year, we'll have a devices problem.
Anything else? I didn't want to share this because there's a lot of teachers out there watching today. And I just want to tell my staff how much I love them and how much I appreciate what they do. This came from a teacher who just sent me a picture of, of her office, or maybe an office that might look like her office at home with the, yes, copy. This flexible teacher is ready to go. I am so, lots of, lots of o's, excited to take this on. It's going to be great, just you wait and see. That's the attitude of our teachers. That's why we have a great staff. That's why they're incredible to work with. And they're going to do a great job of this. Love my staff. They do amazing things every day. And I'm so excited to see what they can come up with. And, and again, in a very different time for education.
And that's why I think we're going to be stronger when we come out of this, is people just like that.
Absolutely. And if she's listening out there, she's probably now embarrassed that I read her text or all of this public airway.
Dean, how many people have we had at any given time watching? I'm just curious.
Uh, it doesn't show the exact number right now. We had concurrent use currently of a hundred eighty-seven, but we peaked somewhere around two hundred when I was watching the numbers.
They were.
I think that's a record.
And certainly this will probably be the new normal as well. We'll also, you know, purchase technology to make this a little cleaner. We'll start investigating the closed captioning piece because that was not able to be thrown together last minute. That's a significant investment. But again, tomorrow, for anyone watching at home, this will be captioned automatically tomorrow. So we'll have that at least.
Anyone have any other questions for Dr. Kobs on this topic of COVID nineteen?
No, I just, I think as I said earlier, we may have to be more as this evolves or changes over time.
And I just want to say, not only like side development, the teachers doing, I appreciate their enthusiasm. I appreciate what the administration's been doing on your spring break, uh, keeping the board informed and the multiple emails going out to keep the staff informed, the multiple emails going out, keep the parents informed. And maybe you had a summer break. I won't promise that. But thank you for working through your spring break and, and job well done and keeping it forward because I know we've had a ton of questions. I would just be remiss not to say thank you to you and your team, the administration, the board, the building principals, everybody for all they're doing.
Thank you. And our, our, our staff is, is awesome. Our admin team, Josh and Amy have put in a ton of work. But this is, this is what we love to do. There's always an incredible, I think, passion from especially the three of us when we, when we dive into the unknown. And I think you'll see it from our staff too, and, and really trying to brainstorm a great opportunity for our students and for our learning. Again, it'll be exciting. I wish that we didn't have to go through this. But these are not decisions that we got to make and we're gonna see what we can do. But I do very much appreciate our board. You know, over the course of the last four or five days, we've probably communicated more about COVID than any other thing that we, we've communicated about. And, and you've put up with my text messages and my, and my emails trying to keep you all informed. And also when I need to, to be with, with something that we've gotta get the information through. When we've been able to communicate that I'll be out for a little bit, that's, that's, that's been okay. So I appreciate that very much and certainly appreciate the, the ability that we have to work together and do something great for our district. I certainly think that our community is, is, is in a great spot with this Board of Education and all that you're going to be able to, to accomplish for our community in this time of, of need for them. So thank you all very much for that.
On that note, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second, all in favor, raise your hand. Passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.